There you go.
All right, it being 1:30, we'll reconvene. Mrs. Bach, we're on the City Clerk's matters.
Okay. The first item we have is 6A. We have a few reappointments. Mr. Skip Wood and Mr. Gary Embry from the Airport Commission would like to be reappointed, as well as Mr. Richard Yim from the Recreation Commission.
Motion to reappoint.
Second.
This is a voice vote? Is this satisfactory?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, nothing.
And the next item, item 6B, is a long time coming. Back in March, the council approved forming the historic Downtown Vero Beach Economic Development Zone Advisory Committee. And we finally have enough applications in to go ahead and get that committee started. We still need two alternate members on the commission, but we still have the notice posted, so hopefully we'll be getting some more applicants for in there. So those interested in serving are Terry Torres, Barry Shapiro, Scott Chisholm, Jessica Hawkins, and Gary Rooney.
Motion to approve appointments?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, nothing.
Thank you. And the last item, 6C, I will pass on to the city attorney.
What we're asking for is the council to approve releasing the lien that was created by the Code Enforcement Board order that was recorded. Case involved a commercial vehicle that had been left on the property in a residential neighborhood. Basically, the actual owner had abandoned the property. It was going through foreclosure. Once the property was purchased at public sale, the vehicle was quite promptly removed from the premises. The problem is, the party that was cited, and the only party that was cited, was really just the mortgage servicing company. They didn't really have ownership or possession of the property. So the problem for the code enforcement officers was, the property was in transition. In fact, the procedures had already started when they actually came across this. I imagine was complaint generated. And really, the city is claiming a lien that's really not enforceable on this property. And we'd recommend that we just release the lien, rather than getting into a fight with the new owner of the property, which is Fannie Mae.
So for future reference, what would we do the next time this happens?
Well, the procedure in the code provides that there was an owner, but they probably couldn't be found, because they had abandoned the property. What the code says, you really need to notice the property owner in this situation. It was supposedly owner occupied, but they had left the property. So really, what they typically do is also notice any banks, or, in this case, was a servicing agent. But the actual owner at the time was not noticed.
So the John Doe, whoever it was, you didn't know the address. You couldn't have a mailing address or anything. And the bank hadn't taken it over yet?
And the bank had not taken ownership. The original bank that held the mortgage basically turned over. It is sold at public auction, based on bids, of course. And the ultimate buyer was Fannie Mae. They were probably insuring the mortgage or something. But the transition between an old owner and a new owner, if the code violation still exists, what they do is stop the enforcement action on the old owner and restart it on the new owner. But here, there was such a short span of time, I mean, they immediately corrected the problem once they were able to take possession.
Okay.
And it was, like I said, it was really kind of a nominal-type violation. It wasn't like, it wasn't high grass or anything. It was just a vehicle parked in the driveway that shouldn't have been there.
I was just interested in the procedure for future reference. I move to adopt a staff recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes five, nothing. All right. That passes as City Manager's Matters. Jim?
I just have a couple of items. One is that, as we have been discussing, we put out an RFP for rate study. And we formed a rate study committee to look over the RFPs that came back. And we are recommending PRMG, which is the Public Resources Management Group. This is the group, or the company, that did the previous rate study, and I think very prepared to hit the ground running with all the information. They have kept all that information that they have compiled on us before. They understand our situation and the way we operate. So we are recommending that PRMG. And it's actually not a vote that the council has to take. It's within my preview of expenditure, but I thought I would bring it forward to the council, just to make sure you were informed as to where we're going.
Thank you, Jim.
But we did follow the typical process.
Jim, just one question on that. Will there be some sort of work order? By that, I mean, just what will your priorities be? I mean, what do we want them to accomplish, other than rate sufficiency? Because it is more than that. And there's some of that in the proposal.
Yeah, rate sufficiency is one thing. Another thing we want is our rate structure. We would like to make sure that we are allocating our costs according to where our expenses actually are. And then give us some recommendations as to what kind of incentives or disincentives in order to bring down some of those costs that may be impacting the whole system. Another important feature of what we put into this is that they are going to be with us for over the five-year period, in which, if we need them to come in for an update, example will be is when we do optimization study, we would like them to come in and review what is being recommended, what they would implement, and how that would affect our rates going forward. So they are fully engaged in that discussion of, and they know the optimization study's going to come during the period in which they are performing this function as well.
I'm just wondering if it would be good, you know, for you and Tom to come forward with, you know, question one, two, and three, whatever those are, points, and let us look at those, to be sure that we don't miss anything. And I'm thinking about ancillary charges and such like that, to be sure we don't miss any opportunities. I don't know, just, I'm thinking out loud.
They're going to be looking at, and they'll be looking at all those type of charges that we have. You've got to remember that if you try to place all the cost, just take cutoff, as an example, of a commercial building, and let's say the utility bill is $200, by the time we get out there, go through the function, it costs us $400, they obviously are going to let that go in their rear. So we've got to be careful as to how we manage and trying to cover 100% of cost of everything at one time. But at the same time, there should be a charge that would indicate that that is a cost to the city in our operation of the utility. But to answer your question, Mayor, during this process, they'll be coming back and showing us the areas in which they are addressing. And we'll get updates from them as well. And obviously, we will take them to the Utility Commission for review.
Yeah, I think it's the sense of the commission that Jim should proceed. I think, yes, it is. Okay.
We will proceed with PRMG on that contract. Second item is the approved the Keontae work. It's a work order. What we're trying to do here is upgrade our system, as you know, that we're going into the bank lockbox and some of those, this will help facilitate it. We also structured this in a fashion that if we sell the electric system, it's not going to have any impact on this contract renewal. The margin of, we waited around, and what would happen if we did it now is very, very small. But we think we really need to upgrade if we're going to implement some of our cost savings and give our customers contact and ways of paying their bills and addressing their utility accounts with us. So we would recommend that we move forward with the upgrade and approval of this work order.
You need council approval?
I think I need council approval on this one.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, nothing. Jim? I have one other, and others probably have for you, too. Just to explain Unit 3 being retired, I think that's the proper word.
Unit 3 officially today is retired. We're filling out some of the paperwork for the pool service, but the fact of the matter is, is the cost of repairs exceeded the value of what Unit 3 was adding to us. And since it was not covered under our OUC contract, we decided just to completely take it offline and not spend any more money on that. Unfortunately for us, Unit 2 had some problems. We had some bearings that went out due to, and caused some overheating. And we have about a $200,000 expenditure that's going to go into that, to get Unit 2. Obviously, we need Unit 2 up when we have 5. And so, at this time, we're doing some just cursory maintenance on Unit 5 as well, since they're both down, and it was a scheduled outage.
I heard that Smithsonian was looking for a display. You could send three to them.
Well, we also have the motor over in the old diesel plant, so when the Smithsonian, they might want to put an annex down here.
Yeah. Or 18 cents a pound, either one.
Other questions for Jim?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I know when we originally scheduled this meeting for Election Day, we had hoped at that time to be discussing our pension plan and converting that to a defined contribution, and just trying to get an update of where we are.
Yes, the pension board met yesterday for the general employees, and this topic did come up, because we're still moving forward, ICMA as an example. Obviously, we have to wait for the union negotiations to go through, and we're negotiating in good faith, but given the direction of where the council seems to want to go. And so we had our mediation. In the mediation, the Teamsters requested they file briefs after that discussion. One of the things that we're asking for is that our package be accepted as in total, not elements from one element to the other. And so Jason indicated that, since that request for a brief had been requested to mediator, that it more than likely would be approved, which it was. So they have 30 days to do that, which carries us into right to end of November, first part of December. Then the mediator has 14 days to respond to that, which puts us right on top of Christmas. So it'll probably be the January meeting that we'll be scheduling and bringing up, where you all will settle the mediation conflict. In no way do we believe that the mediator is actually going to agree to everything we put on there. They're usually looking for a middle ground. We had no middle ground to really propose. And so it's one of those issues that'll come back to council for your all's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Goffanty.
And the pension is obviously the niche pin of that whole thing.
Would that affect, because of the delay, and will this affect our budget for next year?
No, it really won't. We sort of planned that it was going to be carried over into at least that first quarter of the year, because by the time you all indicate that that's what you want to do, then we have to go to the change of the plans from the defined.
Yeah, the implementation stage, it seems like we're maybe extending it another three months even.
That is correct. It'll be two or three months. But the good thing is, I think we've set the stage. If you all say that that's what you want, then we're ready to implement. And we already have the contract. You've approved the ICMA, which would step in into that circumstance.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions, Jim?
No.
Questions or points for Wayne, please? I guess not. That brings us to City Council A1. And this is your matter, Mrs. Attorney.
Yeah, and I guess actually this could go for part of the city attorney, too. This item is the potential loss of Indian River Shores' electric customers. And our mediation efforts to date are at an impasse, with no clear resolution to favor the city. The impact of the potential loss of Indian River Shores' electric customers must be evaluated. I mean, we can't be developing a negotiation strategy unless we know what the impact, how much this loss of these customers is. And I think it's time to be looking at, you know, our strategy that has failed to date, what else can be done. Indian River Shores and the county are responding to their ratepayers' frustration. Now, the whole model of Vero Electric is a bit, you know, it's a flawed business model. I mean, our land utility company produces the power. They sell it to the Florida Municipal Power Association, who then sells it to Vero Electric, who then sells it to our rate customers. You know, I mean, it's just a bad model to start with. I think the city to date, I think we've been poorly represented. I believe Mr. Wright's promoting FMPA/OUC interest. When he presented this OUC new contract to us, there wasn't one negative. I've never heard of a lawyer present any kind of agreement that has no negative at all for the city. I think the council would continue to abdicate any policymaking obligation that we have as elected officials to staff and FMPA council. Once again, I'm still asking for financials on the impact of losing the Shores' customers. I believe we'll be addressing county ones later, but the Shores in particular of interest to me, because I do believe that there is a very strong support or protection from municipal entities to be able to determine their own fate. So that's what I'm looking for. What's, yeah, what's the strategy from here?
We did give, there's a memorandum dated October the 29th, the impact on the electrical loss outside the city limits. And we did run that analysis to the best we could, within parameters that we sort of set ourselves. But it did include, because I'm not sure that you can treat Indian River Shores really any different than Indian River County, if one goes, I think, the whole thing. And based on the position that Indian River County is presenting to us, i.e. participating in this mediation, it is anticipated that they will be part of the lawsuit at the end of the day. And so we gave as best we could as to what the impact would be, and you can see it's pretty substantial.
Once again, my question is, where is our strategy going from here? You know, we've wasted three meetings, three mediation meetings. We haven't been able to bring anything forward to change that. Mr. Mayor?
Comment, only comment I would have is, I believe the PSC, and Jim, help me with this. Give me the PSC study. There's on the 13th, their committee is going to come forward, and on the 25th or 6th, there'll be a ruling.
The county has filed a PSC issue, talking about our rates, and trying to define the difference between territorial versus the franchised area. The 13th of November is when the PSC staff is supposed to have their initial report out. And then it's the 26th, I believe, is when the PSC will sit down and actually have the hearing on the request from the county. And so that document will pretty well tell us some indication as to where the PSC stands in the process. Again, it only really affects directly the Indian River County and not Indian River Shores, but it is a fundamental of what Indian River Shores is saying, i.e., franchise overrules what is taking place in the state PSC granted service areas. Coming back to what a strategy would be, you know, that's, it's very difficult, because we can't cut a deal for a customer in Indian River Shores any different than we cut a deal for the customer in the city of Vero Beach. So you can't have a, unless you can distinguish a difference in cost of service. So a residential customer in Indian River Shores, again, would be reflective of a customer in Vero Beach. So I, I'm not sure that we have any real room to negotiate a deal. And to this date, Indian River Shores and the county have been pretty firm on their position. We want FP&L rates from this point going forward. We have no method by which to give that. Because the only people who are going to control Florida Power and Light rates is Florida Power and Light, and depending on how their fuel mix goes, and how the nuclear plants work, and all this other good stuff. So we don't, to this point, there has been no real room for negotiating of something that we could concede on one side or the other. In my personal opinion, this is destined to go to court. That's where we're going to wind up. It's all said and done. I don't see, there's been no give or take. You know, we've talked about things from our side, but if you'll notice, Indian River Shores or the county, they keep saying the same thing. We want Florida Power and Light rates.
Well, that's where it's going to end up, in the courts, and I think that's where it belongs. You can't do a business plan on a hearsay, "I would like," or "I need." The only way you can make a business plan is if you have a court ruling, where you can hang some legal standing on your procedure. It'd be nice to know, in your magic ball, what our plan would be, but until we get a court ruling, it's going to be, there's just no way you can predict it.
Yeah, and there's no question that when we, if we go to court, any ruling against the city would be really setting a new precedence in the utility industry. It also sets a new precedence in acquisition of public facilities. I mean, those are assets of the government, i.e. our electric lines. And it's, I'm not sure that there's any precedent where somebody can confiscate city assets. So you have issues there. And it's obviously a very convoluted process of discussion. And again, I just, I don't know what strategy we could actually implement.
It would be a huge, be a huge decision if they went and allowed them to withdraw. I mean, that's a precedent-setting decision if they were to do that.
Very, very true. And I think that's the key.
It wouldn't be just us. It'd be all across the state. It would be changing, heck, all over the nation.
Everyone would panic.
It'd be an internet.
It would have jumped in.
Yep.
So I'm not sure that you could really develop a logical strategy at this point, because I'm not sure that we have any way, anything to give.
Everything we've offered, they don't want, so.
Well, the people that control everything are OUC, FMPA, and we have a contract with them. We have to honor, so it's, we don't have any options. So that's why I say it belongs in the courts. Once it gets through the court, we'll have a place to start.
Then we'll be forced to have a strategy, for sure.
Yep.
And the timing, as far as it getting into court, then? At least the, well, the lawsuit itself, that goes to mediation, it goes to another mediation? Can we go through those steps, please?
The last date that we were bantering about was December 17th.
17th, I believe, was.
But appears the mediator that has been, principally been agreed upon, is apparently not available the 17th. So now we're looking in the early part of January. And the last thing I heard was January 6th, but there's a council meeting that day, so they tried to schedule it in the afternoon. But once that is completed, then obviously, the parties are certainly can reactivate the lawsuit.
But do you see a very extended discovery process with that?
With the court?
Well, with mediation, really, typically what the sides do is you just prepare a mediation statement for the mediator.
I mean, with going to court, I mean, actually getting a date where this would be heard, I see that being pretty attractive.
We've taken a year and a half of our diesel plant.
Yeah, so.
I have lost all my faith in the court business.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just depends on how quickly the other parties are willing to move it along. I mean.
Using the word "quick" is kind of interesting.
Yeah.
How about how slow they?
Yeah. I know that, and I think Jim would agree, the other parties want to get this resolved, too, one way or the other.
And the other parties especially are, you know, shooting for that 2016 date.
Right, the franchise.
So I presume that would be the target, as we go down this exercise.
No good news.
Anything else? All right.
I think Mr. Goffanty wants to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Goffanty. I didn't see you. I apologize.
If you remember, months ago, or six months, or eight, 10 years, 10 years ago or something, I told you that I had a relationship with a contract attorney, a formidable contract attorney. And he said, and I told you at the time, and I quote him, he said, "There will be lawsuits, and there will be lawsuits." End of quote. And he didn't indicate where they'd come from, so you shouldn't be surprised that this is, this is, well, now, this is not my ideas. I'm just relating, relaying what he told me. And because of his stature, I accepted his take on the whole situation. My question to you is, what is it going to cost us, do you think? And who is going to defend us in this, in these court, when we go to court? And what happens in 2016, when apparently Indian River Shores is able to get away from our obligations that Mr. Fletcher just pointed out with the FMPA and OUC? They're not bound by their, our contract with them. They're bound by a contract with us. So if they get away, what do you think is going to happen to the tax rate and also our power bills? I see no reason why, and you correct me if you think that there are reasons, I see no reasons why our taxes are going to go up and/or our utility bills are going to go up. And if, for some reason, and I don't have a crystal ball, and neither do any of you, even though it might be precedent-setting decision, if the county escapes our clause, what is going to happen to the ratepayers and the tax, people who pay taxes to the city of Vero Beach? And I'd like you to address that. Any non-talking, how do I say that? Not speaking about that is deceptive to the public. They, I think that we are in really, to go back into the '60s, really, and really deep weeds. And for you people to sit up there and not address this, and talk about the possibility of it, that it would be catastrophic financially to a bunch of people in the city of Vero Beach. Even the people who rent will be moving out, so the people who own rental units, and I'm not one of them, not in the city of Vero Beach, anyway, that these people will suffer. So it's disingenuous of you to sit up there at this late stage of the game to not fully express the possibility of what could happen. I don't see it any other way, and you tell me that you have some magic wand that can wave it over and make this problem disappear. It's, you've only pushed it off, and with this cockamamie, mamie, contract change that the attorney and the city manager concocted, that ain't going, that's only going to make matters worse, which I addressed before. I didn't know I was going to have to do this again. So I waited here for your break and everything, and I just wanted to say that. You owe the public some kind of revelation of what could happen. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but what could happen. And I better be beware.
All right. What further? All right, I guess we'll move to 10A1. This is really kind of pro forma. I'm just asking approval of City Council to sign a letter supporting the U.S. failing. There's quite a long file here, but that's all it really comes to.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's great.
All right. I think I'll yield at that point to Mr. Kramer.
Well, in an effort to make the meeting a little quicker, I've just got one thing. I just want to say a huge thank you to the downtown people for making a great Downtown Friday this last Friday. Land Sharks were absolutely fantastic. Also want to thank Bev Perez, B. Gardner, and Donna Robert Mitchells, the original organizers of the Downtown Friday events. It's turned out to be a wonderful thing, and I certainly hope that we continue having those into the future.
Ms. Attorney?
Thank you. Just wanted to remind everybody, on Tuesday, the 11th, the Veterans Ceremony begins at 9:00, but we're expecting a good crowd out there, so please try to come about 8:30, and do bring a chair. Gives us a chance to honor all our veterans. Hope to be seeing all of you tomorrow at the Richardson Center, Wednesday, 3:30. Please remember to sign in at the desk. This is vitally important, that we have a record of the attendance there, and they know the amount of interest and opposition that is within our community. And just to close in today, wanted to read a few comments from Dr. Scott Payne, who writes for the League of Cities. And the title of this article was "Public Life Isn't Fair." It says, please. It says, pleasing, absolutely. "Pleasing the public isn't the same as serving the public. While being a representative means that we pay attention to what the public wants, being a public servant often means digging deeper. So, we lead by studying, by deep consideration of the short and the long-term interests of our community, and ultimately, by acting as best we can on behalf of the public good. If we expect the public to weigh our service with complete fairness at all times, we are guaranteed to be disappointed. But we have devoted our efforts to making our community better for all, not just for today, but for tomorrow as well." And I'll leave you with those words at the end of my term here. Thank you.
Just again, Downtown Friday was a blast. I was happy to get there, saw some people hassling the band afterwards for T-shirts, so it almost turned into more of a rock concert, and I'll yield my time to Mr. Fletcher.
Thank you. It's been fun, guys. Thank you very much. I'm going to miss, I really will miss all of you. I want to take a few seconds just to thank my wife. As you all know, as all of you probably cannot escape, your second part of your life is your wife and your family, and while I may be attacked, I have an opportunity up here to rebut something, but your spouse, they haven't got a chance, and they take it just as personally as you do.
Or more so.
Yeah, in many cases, more so. And I just want to thank Arlene, for all she's done for me. And I'll move to adjourn.
Your favorite.
We are adjourned, and do we get cake now?
Yes.
Absolutely.